All right, okay, we're on the air. So, welcome everyone this evening. And would you like to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary, roll call.
Olson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Coburn.
Here. And Coburn is excused. Okay, all right, folks, then first on our agenda is a proclamation. And this is over Cancer Prevention Week. So, the American Cancer Society's Cancer Prevention Study, number three. Whereas, the American Cancer Society's Cancer Prevention Study dash three is recruiting 300,000 adults across the United States to help better understand the genetic, environmental, and lifestyle factors that cause or prevent cancer. And whereas, in 2012 alone, more than 1.6 million people in the United States will be diagnosed with cancer. And whereas, Albany has been selected as an enrollment site for this historic study that will follow participants for at least 20 years by asking them to spend no more than 16 minutes every other year updating the research team on their health and habits. And whereas, Albany is known as a caring community with a strong ethic of volunteerism. And whereas, residents have supported Relay for Life events, which raise money each year to help fund research such as this, as well as education, advocacy, and patient services for cancer survivors right here in Albany. Now, therefore, I, Sharon Kenopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim June 16 through 22, 2013, as Cancer Prevention Week in Albany, Oregon, and encourage citizens to participate in the Cancer Prevention Study dash three by enrolling in the study at the Relay for Life of Albany, to be held at South Albany High School track on June 21, 2013. In witness whereof, I hereon too set my hand and caused to the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 12th day of June 2013. And this came to me from our local folks that are working for the Relay for Life of Albany, and we wish them well. They get a lot of folks that turn out for this fundraising event, and we sure appreciate all that they do in helping for cancer prevention, so. Okay? All right. Next, we have several public hearings. And what I'm going to do is, since nobody's signed up, I'll open up the public hearing. And we are going to take items one through five at the same time for the public hearing. So, if you wanted to comment on any of the items on one through five, we'll do it in all one hearing. So, I opened the public hearing at 7:21 PM, and this is going to be for creating an economic improvement district in accordance with ORS 223-122 through 223-132. And it's also going to be for declaring the city's eligibility to receive state revenues and the city's election to receive state revenues, also adopting our 2013 to 14 annual budget, adopting the 2014-2018 capital improvement program, and setting rates for wastewater system use and repealing resolutions number 6185. There will be council a little bit order of change when it comes to us to take the motion on these. We will be changing three and five. Five will be before, and then we'll have four will be, the CIP will be number four, and then the annual budget is going to be number five. So, with that, is there a staff report on any of these, or I can just open up for if there's any public testimony, or Stuart? Anything?
Thank you, Mayor. I could comment on the, number one, creating an economic improvement district. Maybe I'll comment on that one, and then defer to Wes, our city manager, for comments on the budget items. This is the renewal of a five-year economic improvement district in the downtown. My understanding, I think this is this, well, it may be more than the second renewal, as I consider. This is the second public hearing to consider formation of the economic improvement district. There's been notice to all of the properties that would be participants in the district, and they've been invited to participate in both hearings, and so there may be comment tonight. Property owners have been explained the opportunity to remonstrate, to not participate in the economic improvement district. We have received some requests. If we receive greater than 33 percent of the affected properties or of the value of the affected properties that wish to remonstrate, then we would not be able to go forward with establishing the economic improvement district. We've received less than 30 percent, so it is an item that's still ripe for consideration by the city council and for receiving public comment. So, thank you.
Okay. All right. Wes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to briefly talk about the annual budget. Of course, we went through a couple of hearings with the, or a couple of meetings with the Budget Committee before the budget was approved. Since the approval of the budget, there have been some events that have an influence on the coming year's budget that I think the council should take note of and also hear from us as staff as to what we would propose and how to deal with that. We are continuing, and I say "we," this is Stuart and I as the financial officer, that we go ahead and adopt the budget as approved by the Budget Committee with the recognition that we do have some additional costs. Well, I guess it depends on how you want to look at it, some reduction in revenue or some additional costs that we hadn't anticipated at the time that the budget was approved. I think everybody is aware of the tax rebate, refund, excuse me, that will go to Hewlett-Packard as a result of their appeal of their taxes. The city's share of that in our general fund is something in excess of $350,000, at least that's the estimate at this point. That was not anticipated when we considered the budget. We also had a settlement with, an arbitration settlement with one of our unions that we did not budget into that approved budget. So, that combination put some additional strain on an already stressed general fund budget. We believe we can probably get through the year. We had some savings as a result, so we believe there will be some cost reductions as a result of some better-than-expected rates on health insurance, for example. The legislature passed one piece of PERS reforms, reform that will also reduce some of our costs. With those offsets, that takes up at least a piece of the additional costs that we need to make up. The remainder, what we would propose to do is probably hold positions vacant that are budgeted right now until we see what the actual impact on our revenue is going to be probably in around November. And assuming that the revenue picture is good, then we would probably proceed to fill the positions. If not, we would have another look at it and come back to the city council with a plan for how we would deal with it. But we think with that strategy, the approved budget will give us the ability to maintain service levels and get us through the year at least.
Okay, all right. And did Mark want to comment on the wastewater?
Sure.
Yeah.
So, the recommended rate increase that you have before you is based upon our evaluation of the system needs, our evaluation of expected revenues and expenditures. As you'll remember from our May 6 work session, we had projected about a year and a half ago that we would need an 8 percent rate increase at this time. And as we've reevaluated the needs and our revenues and expenditures, we confirm that that 8 percent is needed. The previous two rate discussions before you, one water, one sewer, we were able to come in lower than we had projected previously. This one, it looks like we do need the 8 percent. That's what we've set the budget on. If you would like, I am prepared to go through that whole presentation that I did on May 6 with all the graphs. That's all the information that's in your packet, but if you'd like me to, I can go into that, or I can just answer your questions.
Okay. Any questions? Maybe if the council does want that, we can maybe do that after we take testimony on that. Or was the council wanting to see the presentation again? No? Okay. All right. And were you going to comment on the CIP?
Yeah, so the CIP was presented back in April to a joint group of the council, the Budget Committee, and the Planning Commission. We took comments then, we incorporated that into the CIP. We published the CIP for public comment. We received no public comment, and so the CIP before you is, as you saw it in April, with any adjustments or changes that were required at that time.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, I think that's it. And is there anyone that would like to comment on any of the items on one through five? Yep, Jim?
A couple of weeks ago, I was, I mentioned Mr. Bloomberg and his way of getting people to act the way he wanted them to by instituting regulations and such to make them conform to what he wants them to do.
Jim, do you want to refer to which item of one through five that you would be wanting to refer to?
I will. I will, as soon as I make my clarifying statement.
Okay.
And the, and I noticed a couple of head shake when I, in a negative type thing, when I asked if that's the direction that Albany was going to be going in. And then I look here at this wastewater system for setting the rates, and one of the sentences says, "Whereas, the rate structure should be designed to encourage water conservation." So, the rate structure is going to be raised so that we don't use as much money, or water. That's what that's telling me. The, so you're just going to raise the, part of, part of the reasoning for raising the rates is so that the populace of the city doesn't use as much water. And this is supposed to provide customers reasonable control over their bills. I don't see how that does it. That just seems like a bunch of fluff at the end of that statement to assuage people's consciences or whatever. It's kind of ridiculous. I don't like the social engineering part of the aspect of that. We got, we got rivers all over this state that, that in one day pass, have enough water pass go through them that Albany would never use in a day. It was just one of those major rivers. The one that's sitting out here right now does that. In one day, more water passes by in that thing than we'd use in a year, the whole city. That's a lot of water, and it's, there's no need to really conserve water in this state. There's, there is need for governments to relax some of their rules and regulations, but they just want to suck more money out of the community under the guise of conservation and so that they can do whatever they want with that money. I was also looking at the, because this refers to Chapter 10.06 of the Albany Municipal Code, which refers to Federal Lake Regulations 40 CFR Part 403. I looked that up and actually copied that to my computer because I didn't have time to look at it right then. And when I did, I did a word search on that thing. That thing's 30,000 words long, the federal regulation thing is. I'm wondering what part of that that we're adhering to. That thing's huge. It's 30,000 words. I don't know how many sections. It, it's an amazing mesh, mess of vague wording and words that can mean anything. There's no definition of the words in the thing. At the very end, there's a small list of heavy metals and that kind of thing, but other than that, the whole thing is, it's all vague wording. I'm wondering what, what, what part of that are we, what part of that are we adhering to of the 30,000 words? Has anybody read that? Do you even know what you're signing to?
I read it over 10 years ago, not yet in the sense that...
This is not, this is not your 10 years ago regulation. And it says right up in the front of it that this, this is only partial, it could be, it could be added to at any time. So, you've got to keep up with that stuff. 10 years ago is nothing like it is now. Since the Obama administration's been in there, the EPA's gone nuts, and they've quadrupled everything in there. And then it also refers to, in the Albany Municipal Code, an industrial pre-treatment program. And I did a word search, because I copied that section too, the Chapter 10.06, and then did a search for that because I was wondering what it was referring to. And there's no such wording group as that in the, there's no, the way this is written, it's in capital letters, industrial pre-treatment program. So, I would assume that that is referring to a specific thing, but it's nowhere in there. There's some stuff in it about industrial, there's some stuff about pre-treatments, and there's some stuff about programs, but those three words are not linked in there at all. Are we just making things up as we go along with this, as we're writing this thing out? I don't understand this. I would be voting no against this just because of the social engineering thing if I were on, sitting on the city council. I don't think it's, that stuff should be struck from there. And if it wasn't, I would, I, there's other things that bother me about this where I would be voting no, but that one is a definite no. I would vote no on this thing just because of that, that social engineering aspect of the thing.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, anyone else that would like to comment during this public hearing on items one through five? Okay, not seeing anyone. With that, I will close the public hearing at 7:34 PM. First is a, I think we have on the dais, for the first one, for creating the economic improvement district. There was two separate items on the dais, and I don't know which one we're to go for. Do you know?
Well, this would be, I assume it's the ordinance creating an economic improvement district in accordance with ORS 223-112 through 223-132, and declaring an emergency, which I have just read for the first time.
Yep. Okay. All right. And is there...
I move that the ordinance be read a second time in time of moment.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
An ordinance creating an economic improvement district in accordance with ORS 223-112 through 223-132 and declaring an emergency.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Okay, next is a resolution on page 14, and this one is declaring the city's eligibility to receive state revenues and the city's election to receive state revenues. Counsel, what would you like to do with that item?
Move adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. And then there's a little short resolution on page 15 that goes with that item. And this is the resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
Move adoption.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, next is, resolution is on page 17, and this is the adoption of the budget, annual budget.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to switch that.
Yeah, the mute below, the other, consideration of the other items.
Yep, I had my little arrow down here to switch those items, and I mentioned it earlier in there. I just, thank you, Stuart. So, council, instead, we are going to do, do the, adopting the capital improvement program, then the wastewater, then we'll do the budget. So, item number four is on resolution number, page 23. And that's the capital improvement program.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, now, we're going to go to item five, and that's the resolution on page 31. And that's for the wastewater system, setting the rates. Resolution on page 31.
Move for adoption.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Now, we're going to go back up to item three, and that one is with the annual budget, and that will be back on page 17. Okay? Find it? Is there a motion?
Move for adoption.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Yeah, Rich?
As I stated before, I have issues not with the numbers, but with the timeframe. When we went through it, it felt like it was rushed. After we approved it as the Budget Committee, there were at least five people who then got into a discussion about, it felt like to them it was too rushed as well. And so, for that reason, I'm going to vote against this, not because I think there's anything wrong with it, but because I think in order to a better job, we needed to take more time to do it.
Okay, all right. Any other comments? Okay?
I, yeah, I just want to say, I think, a lot of times, I think the people that were, that Rich is talking about, it's kind of like we go through the department heads, I mean, the whole thing is just so staged that, you know, it'd be kind of, if you could, if we could move funds from one to another, because a lot of, a lot of different departments are funded by general fund money. And maybe if we did a little different way, we could get some ideas, like if we had an idea, like maybe we don't feel, let's see, trying to use a department, I don't want to use Ed's department all the time. I use the library. Say, we might not think that keeping two libraries open is, is good, that we could actually use that money to do something else. And I think that's what some of the people were talking about, because we don't, we're never given the option of, well, if we didn't do this in one department, that we, you know, what could we do to move it? I mean, the council is kind of, I mean, it's only, we're supposed to set policy, but this is the biggest thing that we do in our whole terms or whole elected lives, is the budget of the city. And so, I think it'd be kind of nice if we would, could get an idea if there is a way to move things around, or when, like, when this thing happens with HP and the arbitration, well, now, okay, what if we made it up some other way? I mean, I understand the city manager runs the city, and we hire the city manager, but it's just kind of that idea that I was thinking of, if there's any way of letting the Budget Committee know what can be done, rather than just what's told to us or told to the committee. That, that's kind of where I've been for many years.
Yeah, Ray?
On the other hand, we all, and including the Budget Committee people, received the preliminary budget, what, two to three weeks prior to the formal hearings? So, we've all had ample time all the way up until today to contact city staff to get any specific questions answered. I think there's been ample time to get any questions answered. If we're talking about being able to hash out questions during a formal session, yes, it was structured. By the same token, nobody did not have an opportunity to ask questions if they had done their homework prior.
Just as a suggestion, when we had, we've had this discussion kind of informally in the past, and one of the things that we try and do is, is have an early meeting. That was something we implemented a few years ago in January to address just these kinds of questions. You know, are you as a budget, it's the whole Budget Committee, including the council, of course, that has an opportunity to say, you know, we didn't like the process last year, or there's something we'd really like different in the process this year. It is structured because in part it has to be. I mean, we have to conform with state law as we put the budget together, but we can schedule 10 meetings, we can schedule, you know, as many meetings as people want, we can, we're not bound by a particular, you know, process of presentation. We can do presentations in whatever way, you know, the council would like us to do. And so, what I would recommend is, is at that meeting in January, because it's a group decision, I mean, there's 14 people that have to decide, yeah, this is the way we want to do it, you know, give us some instruction on that, because, you know, we've changed, in the eight years I've been here, we've changed several times the way that we do budget presentations. And I, like I said, I've been doing them for 30 years, and some of, you know, it really boils down to what the Budget Committee, as it should be, I mean, the Budget Committee is the one that decides these things, it boils down to what that committee wants to see and how they want to see it. And so, we're happy to do that, and we'll, we'll have that meeting in January, and if people are thinking about it between now and then and have recommendations, I would encourage folks to get those recommendations to Stuart, and we'll, we'll try and get them on the table or on the agenda for that meeting so that maybe we can have a more satisfying experience next year.
To that end, the five that people that I were talking about, in fact, are putting together a proposal for that.
That's fine. Okay, any other comments? Okay, Floyd?
I agree that the budgets is probably the largest single item that, that we as a council do, because everything else spins out of it. But leading in the budget is our review of the strategic plan, and it is equally as important because that is policy which drives implementation. And the discussion for prioritization needs to occur when we're looking at the strategic plan. The suggestions I would have in the, in the initial January meeting is kind of a heads-up. Here are some significant changes by fund or by department that may be coming this next year, and this is how we anticipate dealing with them unless we hear otherwise. Because part of what I heard Rich say earlier is, what's different than last year? So, if, if there's going to be a substantial decrease in revenue, how are we going to address the drop in revenue? If there's going to be new regulations coming down from the feds or the state that impose cost, how are you going to deal with those? So, that gives us a policy discussion point early in January. You know, I'm not hung up on the number of meetings. I've been through 35 annualized budgets in various organizations, all the way from line-item budgets where you look at everything from 50 bucks up. We don't want to go there. You won't have enough nights for meetings. So, I think we need to stay with the policy-driven choices, recognition of what significant changes are on the horizon for us, and then, just as Councilor Reed and Councilor Christman have suggested for years, is someday we're going to have to make some really tough choices about provisions of services. That's when we have that discussion. Then we send staff away to bring back the dollar values that implement those policy choices.
Okay, all right.
Just one more. I know when I came on, the first time that I was appointed to the Budget Committee, you basically were given the budget, and that was it. And so, I'm just also wondering if there's new people or whatever, if there's can be some sort of a budget training, because I know some people, new people, they're not going to say much because they might not understand it, you know? And so, I think that's, you know, people are kind of shy when it comes to like, oh, I don't want to ask something stupid, you know? And so, I think that has, you know, some of, some of it, you know?
Right. Which is true. I was on Budget Committee before I was on the council, and I kind of felt it was, you know, my responsibility to learn the budget and get educated over the budget. It wasn't the Budget Committee to be educating me over that budget. So, it is, it does take time, and it's, you know, the first year, I, you know, whenever I've appointed somebody to Budget Committee, I say, give it your first year, there's a lot to learn there. So, it, you know, it takes a while to fully be able to, you know, know every page in that budget, but, but it can be done. So, it is, it takes some patience, too.
Yeah, and I would add, and I think we've said this, you know, in, at Budget Committee meetings before, that we as staff are happy to sit down and explain, you know, last year's budget, what we see coming for the coming year, that sort of thing, at any time with any, any counselor or Budget Committee member. And we've had some people take advantage of that, it's kind of rare, but we're happy to do it, it's, you know, and, and we have, part of the problem that we, we deal with is that there is so much information, when you're talking about a large city budget, and you have to do it according, again, to, to state standards, that it isn't a simple issue, and it does take some time and effort to really understand it, but, again, that's part of our role as staff, is to try and provide that support, so we're glad, glad to do that.
Okay, all right, we have a motion on the floor, any more comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Roll call.
Olson?
Yes.
Collins? Johnson?
No.
Kellum?
No.
Kupczynski?
Yes.
Coburn is not here, that's three yes, two no.
Okay, all right. So, by law, we do need to have this finalized by the end of the month, and so, is anybody going to be on vacation in two weeks?
I will be.
Floyd will be? So, will you be able to be?
What changes would the council like to consider, or what, we need to get an approved, an adopted budget by June thirtieth, so if there are changes that need to be made, we still have opportunity for one more scheduled meeting, we could have a, a separate meeting after that, special meeting set by the council for consideration of a budget.
Floyd, will you be by, available by phone for that meeting?
I could be. Oh, no, not in two weeks, I will not.
Okay, so we will need to, we're going to have to have changes, or we're going to have to have a special meeting when we have a full council? Because I think, if I remember, we went through this many years ago, and I remember, I think it was Counselor Jim Lindhart, the late Jim Lindhart, had to be by phone, because in other words, we couldn't make payroll after June thirtieth. So, that was our discussion back then.
But you could schedule a special meeting at any point, so if you'd like to.
Anyway, we can just call Bill now, see if he can be by phone?
Well, a motion has, has failed, you'd have to do a motion to reconsider by somebody who voted against the majority, as I recall. I think what you need to do is schedule a, a special meeting.
Are you here next?
No, it'll be a meeting of the council.
Next Wednesday would be, you know, an option, that's, well.
Well, we do have Cara, we have Cara meeting next week, so we could do it before, or something, Cara, but is anybody going to be gone on the nineteenth?
Only, only Bessie, which would not, that would not necessarily change, I mean, that would change the outcome, potentially.
Then we would be okay, then. Okay, so, why don't we plan on, just prior before Cara, we will have a special city council meeting for adopting the budget?
She did close.
On the nineteenth, next Wednesday. Anything, Jim?
Well, complication, if you, frankly, I don't understand, and so forgive me, I mean, if, if no one wants to change the budget, then this is essentially a protest vote to give you another meeting. If you want to change the budget, then you need to reopen the hearing, so that you can continue hearing to, the hearing to the next special meeting, so that you could then hear from people and change, theoretically change the budget. Now, you could change the budget without a, an additional hearing, but I don't know what.
Well, it sounds like more.
The wish is, I, I don't know.
The, the votes of no was more just over the process that we took, well, there's no, not enough time to totally go back and start with the process, however, what would want to be changed from day one, so it sounds like it's more.
Well, if you want to accept new input, you'll need to reopen the hearing and continue it.
I think probably what we can just do is, the nineteenth, next week, prior to Cara, is go ahead and have, have the vote then. Does that sound okay with the council?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll schedule that. Okay, and in case there's anybody watching or understanding, well, why couldn't we just accept a three-two, as I don't vote unless there is an actual tie, so we have to have a full council here for that part, so, so that's what took place. Okay, and that's it for our public hearings, and those items, and next is business from the public, is there anyone here this evening that would like to bring an item forward? Yes, yeah, Ray?
My name is Ray Hiltz, three zero one two, Tacona Street, Southwest. Mr. Herr, you were talking about some things coming up as far as expenses. In the next several months, you'll be talking about the petition, going out to vote, the revised ballot measure, and talk, and anyway, in my opinion, I think it should go to the vote in November, instead of September, when, or October. In your discussions, you didn't know which way to go. In my opinion, I think because of the costs of elections, and there was some comments made about putting out a voter's pamphlet, and that's really a big expense, and I know anyone making the comments, if it's five hundred dollars, that doesn't really pay for the pamphlet, so I encourage that you look at putting it on the ballot in November, to avoid some of the expenses that's involved in the elections.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you, Ray. Anyone else from business from the public? Not seeing anyone.
In that subject?
Yep.
It's my understanding, the county may have something coming up this fall, that we may be able to tie to, and it just slipped my mind when I was going to call and let folks know that I knew that.
That'd be the council's choice, which, you know, which election you want to send it for, so, yeah, that's an option you can have. Okay, all right, and there was no one else from business from the public, so we have a first reading of ordinance, which this is on page.
Well, there's a corrected ordinance on the dais, and the only correction was, there were, there was a very modest typo, we'd left out the word election after the date, and we'd referred to the date of the election, didn't have the word election, so we fixed it, otherwise, it's the same one that you had in your packet. This ordinance, if I could, Mayor, calls for an election at the September date. When I had asked you before, my understanding was you had said your preference was the September date. There's a pro and con. If we have an election in September, and we have an election in November, if you have multiple elections, there is additional expense. However, in my opinion at least, there are advantages to getting this measure done as soon as possible, A, it keeps faith with the voters, secondly, if the council later decides that you want to put a bond measure, a bond refinance measure, or something on the ballot in November, you don't have two measures which could create some confusion on the ballot. So, there are some practical advantages, there's certainly a, and a potential additional cost. But I'm, if there is no motion to amend, Madam Mayor, then I will read the ordinance with the September date, is that your direction?
I was just giving information.
Okay, go ahead and read the first reading.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
Can you tell us how much elections cost approximately?
I think that the last special election cost on the order of twenty-five thousand, didn't it?
Twenty-eight? Yeah.
Well, I think the argument's, keeping things straight, maybe it's worth twenty-eight thousand, I don't know.
Well, again, if there, if it, if it failed because of confusion, and we then had to later do a petition for judicial validation, with litigation over future debt issues, you could well exceed that cost. My crystal ball isn't clear enough to tell you for sure which is the best outcome. So, I'll read the ordinance, and then if there's an amendment?
Yeah, just a sec, on, on page forty-three, the exhibit A, is that pertinent to this? The very bottom, where it says two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, is the way it's kind of written, you don't normally see it written that way, do you want it kept written that way?
Yes, it, it's fine.
It is okay.
This is, this language was given to us by our bond counsel, so if he's happy with it, I'm happy with it.
Never seen it done that way.
He's the one who's going to have to approve it.
On page forty-four, though, underneath personal liability, and, so what was the wording, so, under G for personal liability, second sentence towards the end, it says section forty, the city council would be, section forty-two shall be jointly and severely liable for the excess? Severely liable, is that necessary to have that word in?
Yes. What it means is, to be jointly liable, one would be liable as a body, to be severally liable, you're liable as an individual. Again, so what it means is, that if you willfully approved a borrowing in violation of the charter, you would be individually, as well as collectively, liable. But, again, the rest of it is, if you act, you don't have that liability, if you act in good faith on the advice of council. I can't see the possibility that you would go out and do a formal borrowing without the advice of council, because almost all of your, I can't think of a borrowing that doesn't really require bond counsel, and bond counsel's not going to let you do it if you're in violation of the charter, because bond counsel's whole role is essentially to guarantee bond buyers that there are no problems with the bond. So, and, and currently, that liability is, under the current charter language, it's joint and several liability as well.
Okay, all right. Okay?
So, this is, I beg your pardon.
John, I just want to say, wondering if, if we go in September, what, if we don't go, if we do go in November, and, I mean, to me, this is just wasting money, as far as, I mean, you know, we're short money already, and here's another twenty-eight, thirty thousand dollars, we're going to go in September instead of November, which would be a, like a, and I understand what you just said, Jim, but I just, I, I just don't think that we need to get it, I don't think there's going to be a difference waiting from September to November, but it could be.
The, I'm, last, one of the last meetings, I asked the question whether we knew whether anybody else would be on the ballot, either in September or November, and at that point, the question, the response was, we knew of no one, and therefore, the cost would be the same, because if there's no one else on the ballot, and it's only us, we stand those costs either way. Now, if the county's coming up with something that's going to go in November, then I assume we'd be doing a sharing of, of costs, but.
They were talking about it, that's not to say they're doing it.
Yeah, and it does appear that the city of Corvallis is also going to have a measure, so that would reduce some of the costs.
On the Benton County side.
On the Benton County side, exactly.
On, in November?
I, I take heart with what Jim has said, and what staff has previously said, is, there may be an opportunity to refinance our outstanding sewer obligation to save several millions of dollars in interest, and by separating the vote on the charter from having a vote on the refunding, it makes it clear, neater, and for the public's advantages, we're saving millions, but it's going to cost us twenty-five thousand dollars or twenty-eight thousand dollars to have it done. I think it also keeps faith with the voters, that we told them, and we said, we don't think it passed. We want to deal with it quickly, we want to deal with it accurately, they want to get it back to the voters. So, I'm in support of taking it to the voters on the earliest possible time, which is September, even though I don't like to spend twenty-eight thousand dollars, I think that is money that may be well spent.
Okay, anything else? Yeah, Rich?
I guess in the, I, I come back to the same thought process that Floyd has, I guess the one saving grace we might have is, if we, if we let the county know that we're going to do something in September, they may well want to piggyback with us. I mean, it's, you know, it saves them money, too.
If I may, one other thing I'd like to add is, you might want to consider, if this, if this is acceptable to you, going ahead with a second reading and adoption tonight, as opposed to waiting till the end of the month. The advantage is, the more time you can give the city clerk to get through the necessary legal hoops, the more certain we are of catching that election date. We technically have time to wait until the end of the month, I'm not aware of any opposition to this, I know this has the support of Mr. Cordier and Mr. Winhausen, and so, I would, I would suggest you might want to get it, go ahead and get it adopted tonight, so that we could get started on it, but that's your call completely. Your call completely. So, this is, I beg your pardon.
It'd be nice if we could have a full council when it comes to this vote, but two weeks from now, we're not going to have a full council anyway, so, yeah.
All right, so I'll proceed with first reading. An ordinance amending ordinance number five eight zero six, and calling for an election to submit to the electors of the city of Albany, the question of revising the city of Albany Charter concerning voter authorization of city borrowing.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
An ordinance amending ordinance number five eight zero six, and calling for an election to submit to the electors of the city of Albany, the question of revising the city of Albany Charter concerning voter authorization of city borrowing, and let me stop before you vote. Mary, do we need an emergency clause in this for any reason?
It would be better, because the filing date is the day after the council approves it, so if you, if you do the emergency clause, and when tomorrow is day one, that is best.
Well, then, your, my request to you would be, I've read it the second time now, I would request that somebody move to amend the ordinance to include the standard emergency clause, which would make the ordinance immediately effective, and then you would proceed to adoption with the emergency amendment.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, we're going to be moving on just the amendment that it has that emergency clause.
Isn't that in section eight already?
It already has an emergency clause?
Nope. It just isn't in the title, it was a mistake in the title, I beg your pardon.
Withdraw the motion.
All right, and so, it's the, the title should reflect and declaring an emergency. The title is not part of the ordinance itself, so you don't need to amend it, I beg your pardon, Council.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
All right, more discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Was that one?
Yes.
Okay, all right, four to one. Or did you need a roll call?
That was four to one with Bessie Johnson voting no, is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, okay, next is adoption of a resolution, and this is for revising parks and fees and charges for the Parks and Recreation Services for next year's fiscal year, and that resolution is on page fifty-three.
Move for adoption.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, and next is revising fees for development code provisions and repealing resolutions number six oh oh one, six oh six two, and six oh six three, this is on page sixty-one as a resolution. Okay, second, is, is a second? Was there? I didn't hear one. Oh, was there a second? Okay, Dick's second, all right, any discussion?
Okay, are we talking option one or option two here? Option two, okay.
Option two, yeah. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, that's one no. Counselor Kellum? Okay, and next, on the back page, is adoption of the consent calendar, we have quite a few items there, so if anyone would like to have an item pulled off, or I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next, page seventy-eight is the Oak Creek Lift Station Enforcement, did you have anything mentioned, Mark?
Sure, just quickly, so you have two awards and bids, you know, the good news and the bad news, you have the good news first, this project, which looks like it will be under budget, I did have a couple counselors ask me about the low bidder, it's a, a new name for us, wondering, are we comfortable with that bidder, and also the bid price, because it's quite a bit lower than, than the engineer's estimate. While we don't have a lot of choice in the low bid process about selecting out who gets the job, generally, it's just by bid. bid price. I will let council know that there was a mandatory pre-bid meeting for all contractors to go to this project to find out what is the scope, and really understand what the project is, the, the project details. We also had a requirement that the contractors, contractor or their sub, fill out information regarding the horizontal directional drilling, their qualifications for that, and the low bidder successfully, obviously, attended that pre-bid meeting, also had the required qualifications for the, the drilling. So, I'll entertain any questions you have about the project or the bid.
Okay, any questions? Or a motion?
I'd move the requested action on page 78.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And next is the Main Street Rehabilitation, and that's on page 82. Mark?
Yes, and this is, if you will, the, the bad news. As you see, the, the project bids came in quite a bit higher than we had anticipated. The project is over budget by $600,000, and it's something that, that I and, and the Public Works staff, we struggled with as far as a recommendation here, and you do have a recommendation to award, but I, we did add a section of an option for council to consider, and that is to reject all bids and rebid the project in the winter for construction in the summer of 2014. And depending on the day that you asked me, I could probably argue both sides. If you were to ask me, how much might we save by rejecting all bids and bidding next year, I would estimate it being a couple hundred thousand dollars, but that's not a sure thing. A lot of it depends on what happens with the economy, what happens with how busy contractors are, that sort of thing. This project, because of the bid date being quite late, a lot of contractors already had their summer projects in line, and we think that, that's a, a large part of why this project cost came in higher than we anticipated. If we were to reject bids, we could give the contractor some more time to do the work. They can get it scheduled in early. So, we're just looking for council to give us direction there.
Yeah, Rich, and then Ray, I think Ray was first and Rich, yeah, sorry.
I noticed on your second paragraph on the discussion, he talks about the lowest bid was rejected because the contractor failed to submit the required first-tier subcontractor disclosure form. Just late, doesn't have it, could, if he came in a week afterwards, would that have been success?
No, they have two hours to submit that form after the bid opening, and so they did not submit it. They had some other irregularities with their bid that could have been waived as minor irregularities, but they did not submit that, and under state law, we're not allowed to award it to them then.
Okay, Rich?
I know, having made bids, construction in the, in the fall and winter, and in the spring and summer, there's quite a difference in thought process when you're making the bid. One, you're finished with the year, and you have your crew now on unemployment, or, you know, they're not working. There's a lot of pressure on you to line up the next year, and if we did this, in fact, in the middle of the year or late in the spring, we would end up with, they're already looking, you know, what they're going to be doing instead of what they're going to be bidding on, so I think we would have a very good chance of having a nice change in dollar volume if we put it off till this coming winter.
One thing I failed to mention was, we weren't, I wasn't sure at the time of our bid opening and having to have this memo done, how the adjacent property owners and business owners might feel about the project. You know, they have been great partners with us as we've worked through the design and how it's gonna impact their businesses. Nolan Nelson did contact most of those property owners or business owners. A few of them did say they preferred that the project move forward this summer. Most of them were ambivalent to the schedule on the project, and I'm not aware of anyone who was adamant that the project move forward this summer rather than next, so in the memo, I promised I'd report out on that, so.
I think we have one business owner here that wanted to kind of comment. So, yeah, Heather, go ahead and come up, and then you'll need to state your name and address, so.
Heather Hill, owner of Legacy Ballet, and it's 104 Main Street, Southeast. My understanding is that this project was initiated by safety issues with traffic and pedestrians on Main Street. We've been in that location for five years, and I cannot tell you how many accidents I have either witnessed, or I'm arriving to work and I see it being cleaned up, and just last week, there was yet another one on Main and Second in that intersection. So, I think for me, construction-wise, whether it happens this summer or next summer, it's gonna be a pain. There's gonna be dust, there's gonna be dirt, there's gonna be all sorts of that, but I do think that it's something that, it's been a safety issue for many, many, many years on Main Street, and it's something that needs to be done.
Okay, thank you, Heather. I know I came up from it the other day, and I thought, you know, I don't want to take that intersection, and I turned off onto Pine and went around. Yeah, so Floyd?
Yeah, I, I'm of the opinion, like Rich, that I think we would be better served, the community would be better served, or rebid in January or early February. When I received the packet, I did contact some, some people that I've worked with before who were principals in estimating large construction projects, and their comment was, "This late in the bidding season, people put a number in. If they get it, they make a lot of money. If they don't get it, they're busy anyhow." You know, if you take a look at the difference between the low that we couldn't accept and, and the middle guy, it's close to $300,000. You know, if I were making a personal choice for $300,000 in a budget, if I had that kind of money, I'd wait a year. You know, it's like bidding and putting a roof on your house. Scale's different, but about the same. I'd wait a year, and I think staff can get it out there, give the contractor some options. The fact that we only had three bidders for this size of project, for a $2 million project, tells me that the majority of the contractors were busy, and that we've got one R and R, I'm not aware of who they are, but I know the other two. We should be seeing five or six bidders on a project this size in this community. So, I think the potential to save even more than what Mark has suggested is great. If R and R simply came back in with their same bid, would be saving nearly $300,000. And I, those are public monies. Just because we have the ability to pay out of our SDC funds, doesn't mean we should spend it.
Okay, all right.
With that, I'd make a motion to reject all bids and rebid the project in early 2014 for construction in the summer of 14.
I would second that.
Okay, any discussion? More discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Okay, all right, thank you, Mark. And next is business from the council. So, Bessie, anything?
Nothing, Ron.
Okay, Dick? Hey, Floyd?
Just to state that I will be absent from the work session, our next one and the next council meeting.
All right, Ray? Rich? Okay. The only thing I have is, last week, it went up to the Amtrak Civic Conversation, and our Economic Development Director, Kate Porch, joined me, and we did a presentation on Albany's train station. So, it was kind of, actually, I think, kind of looking back from when we first originally started our project, they, the conversation now was really pushing towards trying to get stations to be looking at a multimodal project, and I thought, wow, that's what our project was from day one. And so, staff really looked at redoing our train station back then as a multimodal, and we were kind of ahead of the curve back then, so it was kind of really encouraging to see where we really, we're kind of way ahead of, ahead of the, came on that one, so. But also, we are probably very fortunate for the amount of, for what funding that we did get, that, you know, the federal funding, the Amtrak dollars we received, that paid for our Amtrak improvements and paid for the overall train station revitalization, and because a lot of those dollars just aren't there today, so we were very fortunate, looking back on that, for what we had received to be able to really turn around that, our train station, and it is really a very beautiful project that was done. So, seeing that, there was a lot of changes that are kind of coming up on some ADA accessibility that I think, Kate, did you save that little disc thing? I mentioned it to Mark, to give, give staff so they can be able to see what that PowerPoint was, so, so it was real, real informative on that, but, so it was kind of nice to be able to show what we have done with our train station, you know, to this, it was a regional, and there was people from California, Washington, Montana that were there, but, so that was that, and that's it for me. Wes, anything? Okay, all right. Steph, have anything? Okay, okay, so with that, we will recess to executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations in accordance with ORS 192.6602D, and to discuss real property negotiations in accordance with ORS 192.6602E, and we will take a five-minute break, and thank you, folks, for...